Okay, good evening, everybody and welcome. It was a long weekend today, so no jokes and funny things for me today, we're retired. But I'm starting already with jokes. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we just stand, one nation, undivided, indivisible, infinite and just so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Walsh. You know what, actually, I apologize, we have been doing a remote participation in the meeting. And so I'll go ahead and do the roll call and then we'll do that next, thank you. Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milowamway.
Here. So now we're gonna...
We just need a motion.
To allow Councilmember Walsh to remote in because he's out for work, correctly?
I believe so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Boland, second by Councilmember Montney. Okay, sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, awesome, and is he on the line right now?
He is.
Okay, Councilmember Walsh, can you say hello so we know you're here?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Okay, so we're good to go now? Okay, so then, next item on the agenda is a public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have a public comment?
We received no emailed public comment, but we do have one person, Serena Fish, who is present to speak in person.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the City Council. It is also an opportunity for the City Council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized. Okay, awesome, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Serena Fish. I'd like to just do a couple comments on one of the items on the agenda tonight. I've made clear my opinion to my ward, six councilperson, on the tax. So I'll let that go for right now. On his consent agenda, item D. And it's for an application for a supposedly food market to add alcohol. This is located right in the middle of an area where there are a lot of homeless people, there are a lot of disadvantaged people. There are people who go and spend the night at the Salvation Army. There are people come and go living in the garage that's right there. It's also very close to abundant, who does a lot with disadvantaged or people with problems. And putting a liquor store right there for them to just walk out, walk twenty, thirty, fifty feet, I don't think is a good idea. And I know there's a lot of requests, however, we have already downtown area full of bars. And at least they also serve some food. We have, but a lot of the agencies that help people are in that area too. Well, I think one is right across the street almost. So I don't think they wanna add on to their sales or with it, maybe grow and become a bigger grocery store, because that is part of the food desert. And that's what we need more than more alcohol in that area, especially in area which has a large population of people that already have alcohol or alcohol-related problems. Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is recognitions and appointments.
We have three to recognize, we have Amira Harris Bomarito on being selected as the youth member for the Public Safety and Community Relations Board. And then Lauren Pruder to the Transportation Commission. And Tim Foley, sorry, I'm moving a little fast, Tim Foley to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I do believe that Tim is present at the meeting. Thank you for your service.
Okay, that's it, well, okay, well, thank you very much, Tim and others, for your willingness to serve. And I know it takes time out of your schedule. And it's, it's not paid, surprise. But we definitely appreciate the contribution that we know that you will make to this very important committee, so thank you very much. The next item on the agenda...
Sorry, Mayor, your mic is off.
A minute ago?
There you go.
Alright, awesome. So we're, we're going to, it's a truth in taxation hearing related to our levy of both the library and also the city of Bloomington. And I'm gonna turn it over to the City Manager Gleason to provide some introductory remarks and then hand off to Director of Finance Scott Rathman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before we open this, just some few introductory comments related to what was presented last week and some of the information. I've received a fair amount of comments about why are we wanting to capture the growth that we have seen in our property tax values? And its growth not only in the number of properties that we have in the city of Bloomington, but it's also an increase in value of those properties that have been reassessed. Not all properties have been reassessed. Shift gears and what's being presented to council and the community. And what ultimately is approved or not approved, respect that as staff. But the reasoning behind the 1.4 million dollar increase that we're proposing that that gets split between the two public safety pensions, police and fire, is because all of the dedicated revenues do not quite meet the required amount to fund both of those pension funds. In fact, with the 1.4 million dollar increase, again, keeping the property tax rate flat, but capturing the growth again because of the increased numbers of properties and the increase in value again of those properties that have been reassessed, we still fall about $400,000 short. And before we go down the pathway thinking that public safety pensions, a defined benefit pension, is something that is a burden on the communities, it's not. This is something that this council and previous council have put things in play to try to catch up. Statutorily, the police and fire pension funds were created in the early to mid seventies with no funding requirement. And in fact, they weren't funded in many municipalities. So what you're finding today is a requirement to catch up. And we're about two-thirds funded, which is about sixty-five percent, and we're doing well. And it is truly thanks to some of the previous councils and definitely this council. So there is definitely more to the story that I was asked to share, and that's what I'm doing tonight, before I turn the floor over to Finance Director Scott Rathman. Scott? Thanks.
And just for the record for just a second, just wanna state that the hearing was opened at 6:08 PM.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council, that pretty much sums it up, we presented, let's go to the next slide, please. The, the estimate on November 21st. And, and with that, we're proposing the 1.4 million dollar increase, which is over five percent from the prior year. Truth in taxation statutes require that we have this public hearing related to that. The final adoption will be next week, which will do a more extensive presentation like we did on the 21st. But tonight, you know, the really, the meat of the matter is, the 1.4 million dollars that's being proposed is being proposed to be restricted to those public safety pensions. And we have about 10.5 million dollars in restricted revenues currently, 8.3, 8.2 million, excuse me, in current levy from this current year, 2.3 million dollars in utility tax, and the utility tax went into place in 2016. When that went into place, we had a little bit of a surplus for a few years, so we built up reserve. In the last couple of years, we've actually been utilizing that reserve, so there's been a hole, if you will, related to the restricted revenues and the contributions that are required for the pensions. I've been commenting that during the budget, you know, that we're gonna have to address that eventually. And so that's what we're doing here, proposing that we address that with this levy. So fill, filling that shortfall, and that makes dollars available for other things in the budget, like more, more money for roads, et cetera. So having said that, next slide, please. That concludes the brief comments for tonight, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will ask anyone from the public that wants to speak to come forward. Individuals will be allowed to speak only once, and we ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less so that we can get through everyone that desires to speak. And are we gonna have that? Oh, there we go.
There you go. So the first one to speak will be Jaclyn Byer. And Jaclyn, before we start, yep, it is on, will you raise your right hand? And then, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could just tell us your name and then begin.
My name is Jackie Byer, and I'm speaking as a resident and property taxpayer in Bloomington. And on behalf of all the other homeowners who are not aware of what is coming in May. As you hold this truth in taxation hearing, because the levy has increased 6.7%, which hopefully, I think you confirmed, Mr. Rathman. While you do this, the town of Normal is expected to vote tonight to keep their levy flat from last year. The Panograph reported yesterday that the town will be supplementing property taxes with other revenues to meet their pension obligations. The town has also made a promise to avoid collecting property taxes to pay off debt. Bloomington is more than financially capable of doing the same thing with millions of dollars of new revenue streams and plenty of reserves. Last week in speaking about the 2022 EAV increase, Scott Rathman stated that a hope is that there's a widening of the tax base along with vertical assessments. So a lot of new construction has occurred in the area. We don't have a good way of getting the split. So I did some research in terms of vertical assessments for homeowners throughout the city using publicly available data from the assessor's office. Because I wanted to get an idea of how many homes and what areas are the assessments increasing significantly versus none. And while there's some pockets that are, have like little increases in EAVs, I found like a significant number of properties throughout the city that are increasing their EAVs. I calculated estimated property tax amounts using available proposed levies and estimated tax rates that were publicly available and assumed fixed rates for the other taxing bodies, leaving the rate flat for those. Leaving tax rate flat will result in a significant taxi increases. Based on your pre-vote, here are the estimated property tax increases for the city and library combined. You have voted for yourself, assuming all other taxing bodies approve their proposed levies. Trustee Crumpler voted for a $126 increase towards his expected total property tax increase of $655 next year. Trustee Crable, a $142 increase towards his expected $775 total increase. Trustee Ward, a $51 increase towards her expected $314 increase. Trustee Urban's property taxes for the city and library will increase $13 as part of her total estimated $82 increase, while her constituents at 1510 Steeplechase are facing a $112 increase as part of their total $600 property tax increase. Trustee Boland, a $72 increase going towards her expected $390 total increase in taxes. These council members also voted to increase the mayor's property taxes by $90 towards his expected $480 increase. These are the type of property tax increases that your neighbors and residents all around Bloomington should expect, just because their equalized assessed values have increased so significantly due to market forces beyond their control. I personally am expecting a total $620 tax increase with 115 of that increase going to the city and library if these levies are approved. These increases can be mitigated by keeping the levy fat, flat, resulting in a lower tax rate to offset some of the EAV increases. During this time of crushing inflation, would you like to compound that with significantly higher property taxes? As you decide how to vote for these levies, I'd like for you to ask yourself if you could admit to your constituents just how much of their property tax increase you voted for. A vote of no next week will enable you to be able to say none. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jackie.
We do, and next up is Gary Lambert. Gary, if I can swear you in really quickly, you'll just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could start with your name.
My name is Gary Lambert. Brief quiz for you. What does the city of Bloomington, District 87, Unit 5, Junior College, all have in common? They're all raising their taxes between six and seven percent. For each one of those additional dollars, I personally have to bring in or find an additional dollar and forty-two cents allowing for federal tax and state tax to be able to pay for each one of those dollar increases. That's tough. I've been retired for over twenty years. My pension, I'm grateful I've got one, but unlike government workers, there's no automatic inflators on there. I'm still receiving the same pension I received twenty-two years ago. You need to think about that. Because what you're saying is you have more important uses for that additional tax dollar than the citizen does. Couple weeks ago, one of the councilmen used the term fiduciary. And I went out to the Cambridge Dictionary. It says relating to the responsibility to take care of someone else's money in a suitable way. Generally, that's considered to be used when you've got somebody in taking care of a trust fund or some such that you don't scound with funds. But I suggest that each of you have a fiduciary responsibility to every taxpayer in this town. And when you say that your use for that dollar is more important than their use, I question that decision. You know, we just heard, and I'm not sure which one it was, either the manager or the finance director, say that, you know, we're going to raise these taxes to pay for pensions. Well, that's good. And that kinda goes along with what we were told last week. That, oh, we can't be using these surplus funds for operational expenses. Well, why can't you? You can do anything you please, you've proven it time and again. You passed the, not you, the council, passed a half percent tax increase a number of years ago for a specific purpose of plugging the gap in the structural deficit. Not to plow it into your surplus, which has become a slush fund. Not to pay for, I think I heard, eight million dollars for air conditioning for the Colosseum. When we don't have any events there. We're pouring money into something that has a negative value. I would suggest, well, a better use of those funds is that the dollar stay in a taxpayer's pocket. I read somewhere today that it's projected that we're, just this year, we're going to increase our surplus funds by $10 million. I don't know if that's true or not. If it is, this city is swimming in money. You can't spend it fast enough as it's coming in. And yet, you have the nerve to go out and tell the citizens, oh, that's out of this pocket, not out of the other pocket. Take care of the people that put you in office. There's no reason to have a $34 million surplus. And I'm sure you'll find a way to spend it.
Thank you, Gary, your five minutes are up.
Is there a rule on that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a written rule on that?
Hello, George can speak to that, I believe it's a request.
It's a request.
Okay, so the time's not up, but I will sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, last up for this public hearing, we have Clayton Madison. You can raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could start with your name.
Yeah. My name's Clayton Mattson, I live on Clearwater Avenue here in town. I am a firefighter paramedic for the city, and I am the Secretary of Bloomington Local 49. I say that so everybody can hear that I live, work, and play here. So I do understand the negative connotations of tax burden. Nobody likes taxes, I don't like taxes, I don't wanna pay more taxes. But in this issue, we have to understand that we need to take care of our responsibilities and our obligations now, so we're not kicking things down the road and burdening our future. I think our very good financial department has done a great job along with our city manager in explaining everything and putting it out to the public. And I do appreciate City Manager Gleason's comments earlier about the pensions. The reason that I am standing here today, though, is that this tax levy increase does take in consideration the pensions of police and fire. Obviously, I stated that I am a firefighter, so that does involve us. What I would like you to, to remember is that this council has had some forward thinking in the past, some very innovative thinking with utility tax that they implemented prior, that won the city some awards and some recognition for their, their forward thinking and putting that money towards the pensions, because there is a 2040 deadline for the funding that has to be met. So when that taxes is now, by my understanding, starting to dry up, it's not able to sustain as it once was. And that's why we're looking at this property tax levy and that 1.4 million for police and fire. I would send a friendly reminder that if we do not meet our obligations to the pension funds, the double A plus rating that we have can be negatively affected. And that will hurt as far as the rates that the city can get and the financial impact towards the city. Also, if the financial obligations to the pension funds are not met and it's not funded appropriately, then our state funding could be negatively affected, as those monies could be siphoned off to make sure that our funding is appropriate to the pension funds. So those are two negative connotations that we do not want. No, not, we don't want it, the citizens don't want that. That's gonna hurt us not only now, but it will hurt us in the future. And that's only gonna negatively impact people's pocketbooks now and in the future, and we do not want that either. So I would highly recommend going with the recommendations of our city manager and our very good financial department. I think they've laid this out very well. Again, to be frank, taxes suck and nobody wants to pay them. But we do have to make sure that we are meeting our responsibilities and, and our obligations. So that's pretty much all I have to say, that's two minutes left, and I'm gonna cede that to the floor.
Thank you. Do we have?
We have no one else registered to speak, but Jeff had asked that we go ahead and ask if anyone else was here that didn't get to register.
Sure.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. So the tax levy for the city will be, well, let me just first state the time, 6:30, let's say, 29, it looks like. So we're gonna close this hearing at 6:30, 6:29, sorry. And the tax levy for the city will be an action item on the agenda for December 12th. But if any council member wants to offer some brief comments now, there's a limited amount of time on the agenda. But there'll certainly be other, another opportunity next week, but just wanted to make sure. And we do have another hearing coming up as well.
Just have one brief comment. I really appreciate and fully support the need to fully fund our public safety pensions. That's incredibly important to me. The, the caveat to that is, the city has annually now an additional, in excess of four million in revenue that could be used for that, that is not being used for that, that is newly created revenue sources coming from cannabis and coming from the state decision to tax online purchases. So I would just put that out there, that we should be asking, with this being a very important thing, why would we not draw on other sources that we have already available to us? As we've seen revenues for sales tax specifically... why would we not draw on other sources that we have already available to us as we've seen revenues for sales tax specifically significantly increase in these last couple of years?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just wanted to briefly thank our firefighters for coming this evening. You know, and I just want to say our police officers and our firefighters put their lives on the line every day for this community. You know, the pension systems are vital. They're an obligation, a commitment. We must invest in these pension systems to make sure that they're supported. So thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, I want to make sure I didn't forget him.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to move on to a truth in taxation public hearing for the Bloomington Public Library. And I'm going to go ahead and call to order the hearing at six thirty-one, let's say. And again, I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason, who will then turn it over to Director Jeanie Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very brief opening comments. Jeanie Hamilton did an excellent job last week. I think Scott Rathbun might have had some comments as well. But this is a property tax levy not dissimilar to the one that we just did here in the truth and taxation hearing for the city's portion. Just a reminder to the community that when we made the decision to support the expansion and the updating of the library expansion, we knew that when we went to bond, that the rates were not set. And then when we did execute the bond, it was a little bit higher than we had expected. Another portion of this increase that Jeanie has shared with us, and we knew this as a council, that the larger offering, the expanded offering at the library was also going to increase the operating costs. So here we are today with this very same conversation with this as an agenda item next Monday as well. Jeanie, please.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as Scott mentioned earlier, a state statute does require a truth and taxation hearing for aggregate levy increases over five percent. And the Bloomington Public Library levy is increasing by six point eight six percent. This results in no increase to the estimated tax rate. Next slide. As mentioned by Tim and in previous council meetings, in March of twenty twenty-two, the council approved a fourteen point two million dollar bond of funding the library expansion and renovation. As you can tell, March was after last year's levy, so we weren't sure what the rates were going to be. And so our estimate, the final debt service is higher. It's one point zero eight five million dollars. And so this requires an increase in the levy of two hundred thirty-five thousand for twenty twenty-two. And then the other portion of the levy request is enabling the library to capture one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred fifteen, I'm sorry, one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars in revenue growth to help cover rising costs, including inflation. And the library does rely primarily on the tax levy as its source of funding. Next slide. I'll now turn it over to public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeanie. So at this time, we will ask anyone from the public that wants to speak to come forward. And again, individuals will be allowed to speak only once, and we ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less so that we can get through everyone that desires to speak. Is there anybody?
Right now, we just have one person registered, and it's Jaclyn Byer.
Okay.
Jaclyn, if we can start by swearing you in again, separate item. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And if you could start with your name.
I'm Jackie Byer again. Going into the truth and taxation hearing on December sixth to twenty twenty-one, as presented by Mr. Rathbun, the original library expansion project plan prior to the state grant was twenty-two point eight million dollar budget to be funded with a seventeen million dollar bond funded by the taxpayers for twenty years at an estimated one point eight three percent interest rate for an annual levy of one point one million per year. Referring back to the BPL Board meeting minutes from September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, of the two bond options, there was a fifteen million and a seventeen million bond option. The seventeen million bond option was approved, which also included the parking garage. According to Ms. Hamilton, the project cost also reflected five million dollars in cuts for non-brick and mortar items that were deemed to not be necessary until funds were available. At that same truth and taxation hearing, Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Rathbun testified that half of the grant money, two point eight million, would be used to reduce the bond amount to fourteen point two million, thus revising the levy to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. The other half, two point eight million, was going to be used to cover construction cost inflation, which was unknown, and some of the five million dollars for items that were previously deemed as not necessary. There was no set amount that was going to reinstate the cuts for the unnecessary amenities versus set aside for inflation. That is the project that was presented to the public. As we now know, the bond interest rate was significantly higher. And so now the cost is kind of almost back up to the one point one million that was originally approved. But then at the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting, regular agenda item nine D, it was shared that the BPL Board of Trustees approved a twenty-five point three million dollar expansion and renovation of its facilities on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. This amount is higher than what was presented during the truth and taxation hearing. During the same city council meeting, library director Jeanie Hamilton's presented a slide showing the current project budget of twenty-five million, two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-six. That slide also stated the total project cost was twenty-seven thousand, six hundred eleven dollars less than estimated to twelve twenty at December twenty twenty-one. But the difference is actually an increase of two point four million. So I am confused how the city council ended up entering into an intergovernmental agreement and approving a bigger budget. And now the library is requesting a twenty twenty-two expansion project increase of twenty, increased levy of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Also, during the November twenty-two, twenty twenty-one council, city council meeting, when discussing about the library levy, trustee Crumpler made a comment about the library contributing over five million dollars of their own savings, which was part of his reasoning for voting for the library. Based on the BPL financial statement as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the library's financial contribution is only four million, four point one million dollars. I think the library has room to reduce costs to eliminate the need for the increase of the levy this year. And I'm not sure why the numbers are so different. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
We had no others register unless there's somebody now that would like to speak. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, does anybody want to make a comment? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing at six forty. And again, the tax levy for the library would be an action item on the agenda for December twelfth. Just as a reminder. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and move into the consent agenda. And is there, I understand that there are some items that, or one that needs to be pulled at least?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Could you pull eight D for me, please?
Anybody else? Okay, and with that said, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item eighty?
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda except for the item eight.
D as in? No, D as in D. Okay, okay, so moved by council member Crable, and then seconded by council member Bowlin, and we have a link, right? Thank you.
Just a question as we vote. Should our Q say with the exception of D, or is it okay?
Yeah, it's okay. We always just leave it as consent agenda in the poll unit. I think that's what you're referencing. And then make sure we verbally clarify. Thank you. I could get council member Bowlin and council, oh, Walsh just came in.
My phone has locked up. Can I do?
You could just verbally tell us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda with the exception of item eighty passes. No names to announce. And we're going to move to item eight D. Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So I'm pulling this from the consent agenda and bringing it out for discussion because there's been multiple people around this area. This this particular place is in the downtown, right outside of the buckle there. It's right across from one of the garages. And so there is multiple people in this neighborhood and a neighboring business that does not want to see this happen. They are concerned that what we are seeing here is there's no business plan for this increase for this business. There's no added documentation for why they need to do this. The only thing that they're trying to say is, oh, you know, some other businesses got their license, so if they get one, I get one. That's kind of how we're being reported back to me. In addition to that, the, I was reading through some of the minutes from the liquor commission. And this particular business had, at the liquor commission, said that they weren't responsible for the actions of other people. Because apparently the people that are coming into this location and purchasing the beer and wine are consuming it in the actual neighborhood and in the adjacent business. And so there's some discretion there that says, you know, that there might be some issues. I'm reading through those minutes, and it literally looked to me by the time I came to all the conclusions of the different people I talked to, that all they're really doing is trying to change the beer and wine sales to hard alcohol sales to the same clientele. They're not trying to increase their clientele or reach out to a different clientele. They're just changing what they're selling to an already difficult population. And I, and I don't know how to use my phrase, but this is basically a homeless population that's going in here and buying beer and wine and then taking it and then consuming it. And so now we're going to change what we're selling to them from beer and wine to hard alcohol. At the end of the day, this is not an application that is the betterment of the community, the betterment of the city. I don't see it lining up that way. I see this as an actual downgrade. And because of that, I'm not going to be supporting this application. And so I, I, I am just very much against, you know, adding more problems into a situation that's not been resolved. If they had come with a resolution and said, hey, we've resolved our problems with our neighbors, we've resolved our problem with our neighboring business, I might have a different attitude. But there's no resolution here. All there is is let me sell a different type of alcohol to the same people that are already creating a problem. And I'm not here to create more problems. I'm here to represent people. And this neighborhood and community has said they don't want this going on anymore. So with that, I'm going to be making a motion to deny eight D application for this license. I'll second that.
Second. Discussion, vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, please. I'm going through, and I'm looking at the items on the agenda. And on their floor plan for this establishment, they have game room. But they are not requesting, when you go through the application, it says that they are not requesting a gaming license, and that confuses me. Why would they have on their floor plan gaming if they're not requesting a gaming license? So just, just a thought there.
Okay. I'm not sure.
I, I can just state that they have not applied for a video gaming license with us. They're not waitlisted for a video gaming license, and they already have an existing liquor license, so they would qualify to apply to be waitlisted should they want to. So this change wouldn't make a difference with that. But as you said, Mayor, I'm not sure why it says that on their, their plan. It might be some long-term planning perhaps. The other comment that I would make, I sat for the first liquor commission that we heard from them and the opposing business, which is the cleaners next door. And one of the reasons that the meeting was postponed was so that the two of them could, could connect and see if there was, you know, some of the concerns could be set aside. Amanda, that's when my deputy clerk sat for the second meeting, which was on November eighth. And the minutes do reflect that Mr. Patel testified that prior to the meeting, he had received a text message saying that they were, that the opposing business, neighboring business was withdrawing their objection. Now, that is Mr. Patel's testimony, and the other business owner did not appear. That said, they were at the first meeting and were aware of when the, the meeting would happen again. So, for what it's worth.
Councilmember Crable?
Sure. I just wanted to clarify what council member Walsh said. So I think that, that map's on page fifty-one, and I think it's in the wrong place because it has hotel entrance and a front desk along with, with the game room. So I looked at that, and I was like, what's that? And then I thought, well, maybe this should have been with the Hawthorne.
Yeah.
You know, application. And then I was going to ask something else here. Is there anywhere else close by? Do we know that they, that people in that area could buy hard liquor?
Yes, there's several bars just literally less than a block away that, that also have the all package that they could sell that as well.
Okay, and you just think that that's having another one would be too many?
It's just too much, yeah. And then they, and actually, there's a lot of people that live in this neighborhood that are not happy about the fact that people are buying the alcohol here, and then they are sitting, they go around from the laundromat, and they're sitting on the premises, and they're actually consuming the alcohol in this neighborhood. And so the people that live there are not real happy about it.
Okay. You know, I think normally looking at this, I might go ahead and vote for it, but I, I take into account, you know, what the older person thinks because they've spoken most with the community in that area. So I will be voting yes, right, to, okay.
If I, if I could just make a couple of statements about the process and the process that occurred at the liquor commission and the process in, in voting on it, or, you know, things that could be considered. With respect to the liquor commission, I was at both of those meetings. And there were, there was the applicant, there was the next door business, and perhaps one other person at the first hearing. At the second hearing, I believe there was just the applicant. I know the other business person didn't show up, and I don't believe there was anyone else. There may have been one. So, you know, please refer to the minutes because it's been a month or two since these things occurred, so I wouldn't say this is exactly gospel. But I'm just giving an idea that there wasn't a lot, like Alderman Crable just asked about other places nearby. There wasn't a lot of feedback from the neighborhood, and I think one of the reasons may have been there were twenty-eight notices sent, but they were sent to adjacent businesses because this was an existing business. I just wanted to point out, and of course, you know, you have the option to deny it on the basis there's, there's a motion saying it wasn't in the city's best interest or that it's not in the city's or community's best interest. My understanding is the finding supporting the emotion. Two other options. Obviously, the other extreme, or I don't know if I'd say extreme, but the other one is to say, is to vote in favor of it, that, you know, that's not what's on the table at this point. A third option may be to send it back with a wider notice given, perhaps the five hundred foot notice that would allow for that would allow for the neighbors to have direct input rather than, you know, obviously they have a representative here and that's, you know, that's one way that the council can proceed. But another may be to send it back and, and allow for the neighborhood and the applicant to have additional input that could then form a basis for a record. So I just wanted to review there the options and a little bit about, about what the, what the commission records detail at this point.
And thank you, George. Let me add, because I was also there. So a number of the things that have been stated in terms of the, the application and the support for it is, is true. The previous, the, the, the owner of the business next door was there and was complimentary of this particular business, Mr. Patel and how he runs his business. And that's why after the first, the, the first meeting, there was an agreement to, for them to get together and, and discuss the, the issue that he was bringing up. One of the things that I do remember, we, we asked him, you know, it, he could not tie some of those issues to whatever issues he was experiencing, tie them to people purchasing alcohol and Mr. Patel's, you know, establishment. So, and we, you know, as a, as a commission, we also looked at the fact that Mr. Patel was owner of Franzetti's, right? And had been a responsible owner and also wanted to, to, to give him a chance to, 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 to show that, you know, this, you know, one, the businesses could coexist. And, and, and that also that he'll continue to run a, a, a good business. Say, I think. Yeah, those are the, the things that I wanted to make sure that were also stated. Obviously, it's the, it's the council's prerogative. We do have a, a motion on the table. And I think unless, yeah, other council member Becker.
So one comment. On, on the surface, we had one objection that was formally given in a meeting. We have not formally seen the removal of that objection and no, no offense to the person who got the text, right? But we haven't formally seen that. Based on everything else I'm hearing, until I formally see that, I could not vote for this. If the, the other business owner on the record said, yeah, my objections are gone, that would be a different story. But until I see that, I, I would actually vote to table it rather than to reject it if I had my preference. But with the motion on the table right now, I will probably vote to not go forward with this.
Okay, council member Monty and then council member Bowlin.
There was a second piece also, which was a revision of the current construct of the license to allow for single service, single serve purchases. So you can literally go in based on what's being proposed and buy one bottle of alcohol and walk right out and drink it like you're buying a Coca-Cola. I found that to be an interesting change as well. And I think it supports some of the concerns that council member Urban has brought to the table here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yeah. It could be sent back to the liquor commission for individuals to come in. But I just want to remind everyone, the liquor commission is at four o'clock and most individuals are at work at that time. So it's very difficult to get to the, to the meeting.
Okay, so I think we can go ahead. Councilmember Walsh.
I don't know if he wants to make comment. I was going to say the electronic vote is ready.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. That's what you were pointing to. I thought you were pointing to him.
Could we restate the motion just so we know?
Sure. Councilmember Urban, do you want to restate your motions to reject it basically?
My motion is to deny the application of eighty. So saying yes is to say no to the application.
Okay. Sounds good. So go ahead and vote. Okay, so the item is rejected because there are all yeses and no nays to announce. Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item eight A on the agenda, regular agenda. A consideration in action on an ordinance approving economic development and socioeconomic grant programs in furtherance of the American Rescue Plan Act as requested by the administration department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I turn the floor over to the Economic Community Development Director Melissa Hahn. I just wanted to remind the community that staff were directed to work on this piece. We made a presentation, I believe it was at the September or October Committee of the Whole. And this is the turnaround for that. Just a reminder also to the community, we established three buckets that our thirteen point four million dollars was placed into. With some of it spent already, some of it obligated, and many of the funds are yet to be spent. But one bucket was infrastructure. Nine million dollars was pledged to this amount. And then a socioeconomic bucket was created and an economic development bucket was created, each with two point two million dollars in each one, which equals the thirteen four, thirteen point four million dollars that we received in total on ARP funds. Just a reminder, even though we at this level have placed this into what we are calling buckets, just for conversation with the community and council as they direct the, the spending of these funds. We still on every single expenditure have to follow the treasury guidelines. So while maybe some of the language that we're using buckets, infrastructure, socioeconomic or economic development may not align. But the, with the language in the treasury documents, the spending itself and the documentation and the accountability definitely will. Also, one more thing regarding this, you know, this was a communication to the community, a pledge, an idea of how these funds were going to be used. If council during this open period that we can dedicate these funds and use these funds through expenditure, I believe in twenty twenty-six, council can shift these. If council had the strong desire that, you know, a million dollars in each of the socioeconomic and economic development funds should be applied to infrastructure. So raising that nine million to eleven million total in that example, that's something that's well within the right of this council. So just a quick reminder. Melissa, I think has three or four slides. I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council and City Manager. As the City Manager explained, what we've got before you tonight is an ordinance outlining the programs that we presented, I believe, back on September twenty-sixth. Not much has changed from that, but just wanted to go back through kind of the different program, program guidelines and offer that up for any discussion. Next slide, please. So the first one that I'm going to run through is the Economic Development Program. With the, the funding remaining, the maximum funding for this will be the one point four million. Some of that money was already expended through items that were awarded by council. So that's what's remaining. For this program, it would be rehabilitation grants for disproportionately impacted small businesses within the community. All of the recipients must qualify as a small business per section three of the Small Business Act. And that's part of the treasury guidelines that we would follow. The grants would be limited to a maximum amount of forty-five thousand dollars per recipient. The recipients would have to show documentation as to what rehabilitation would occur. So they would have to verify, you know, the amount that they're applying for and, and what those expenses would be. The rehabilitation grants can be utilized for rehabilitation of commercial properties and they would have to be located within a qualified census tract. So that's what per the treasury makes them disproportionately impacted is those that are, that fall within those qualified census tracts. The grants will be awarded on a first come, first served basis until all of the funds are expended. And as I mentioned, the maximum available left for these grants would be the one point four outlined there on the slide. A next slide, please. The next program would be one of the socioeconomic. We've taken that and divided it into two programs. So the first would be the assistance to nonprofits. Each nonprofit grant would be limited to a hundred and fifty thousand or less per recipient. Once again, we would be looking in that application, what they would be applying for, how the funds would be used. A nonprofit grant recipient must serve Bloomington residents. And they must be residents who have an annual income at or below the three hundred percent of the federal poverty line. The grants must be utilized for needs identified in the consolidated plan and community health plan survey. And those can vary from everything to homeless programs, job training. Trying to think what else was in there, sorry. Senior services, food services, health services focusing on disparities, mental health services. And as I mentioned, workforce development and job training activities. The nonprofit grants would be awarded to eligible applicants, once again, on a first come, first served basis until those funds are expended. The maximum funds available would be the one million twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. For this program, as I said, we've taken this and divided it into the assistance to nonprofits and then also for affordable housing. So next slide, please. So the third and final program would be the socioeconomic, helping with affordable housing rehabilitation grants. These housing grants would be limited to forty-five thousand or less per recipient. Once again, the recipient would have to show what expenditures they were applying for. So it may not come up to be forty-five thousand for each recipient. This is very close to what we do for our other CDBG and IDA rehabilitation programs. Apologize, I'm just getting over an illness, so losing my voice a little. Eligible recipients must have an annual income at or below the eighty percent area median income. And that's standard that we follow as well with our CDBG programs. The housing grants must be used for single family home or rental unit within the regeneration area as defined in the comprehensive plan. With those, this would allow landlords to apply or individuals could apply, but they would have to, the landlord would also have to be part of that application process. So this could help as well, providing some increased affordable housing in the rental units as well. Housing grants would be awarded to eligible applicants, applicants on a first come, first served basis or through a lottery system. So that's something that we're considering with this program and that will be outlined later as we develop the required policies and procedures for each of the program. The maximum fund award for this would be the, once again, the one million twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety, or seven hundred and thirty-one. And just one item I wanted to highlight from the memo, the memo did state that the programs would open the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. And just to correct that right now, we're looking at programs opening and being available in the second quarter of twenty twenty-three, probably right around May first. So this will allow time for staff to develop the applications, develop all necessary policies and procedures and reporting requirements as outlined by the treasury. It would also allow time to market the programs to those that would fall within those areas. So we could actually go in and really target those homeowners within the regeneration area. We will be able to target those commercial properties within the qualified census tracts as well as the nonprofits that we are familiar with and, and work with within the community and really give us a chance to market and make sure everybody's aware of what's available and when they can start to apply. And that's it for me. I'll open it for questions. Comment?
Okay, we have council member Ward and council member Urban and Bowlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two questions. Can you shed a little bit of light on how staff came to those amounts in terms of the, the ceilings on the, the grants themselves?
Sure. So for the, for the small business rehabilitation grants, there are some different reporting guidelines once it's over a certain amount, as well as with the, we don't do commercial rehabilitation with the CDBG programs. Right now, it's all single family, kind of falls within that forty-five thousand. So we were kind of keeping in line with the programs that we currently offer as well as not having any additional, you know, trying to provide totals with under that fifty thousand for the small business development grants, as well as looking at what we felt like would have the greatest impact and helping the largest number of small businesses. For the nonprofit, the one fifty was in line with what we had previously awarded as well as once again, just trying to provide a substantial amount of funding, but then also hoping to hit as many different nonprofits as possible within the community. There are a lot of programs that, you know, may not require the full one fifty, but that one fifty could also provide a substantial impact in, you know, being able to either get, you know, things that they need in order to keep their programs up and running. And then once again, with the, the rehabilitation, the forty-five is, is standard kind of in line with what we do right now for our other housing rehabilitation programs.
And then one other question, can the housing rehabilitation grants be used retroactively?
No.
That's as it's currently written or is that, is there some rule that says that that can't happen?
I would have to go back and verify, but without determining eligibility, we would not be able to show the person was eligible at the time that the work occurred. So we would need to prove eligibility before we would be able to award the grant. But I wouldn't necessarily be able to verify that they were eligible for work that had previously occurred.
So, so until the city application process is underway and so forth, any, any work that anybody does on their house, they can't, they can't have any, any assistance with that?
They could apply for our other programs. I mean, we do have CDBG and IDA. And we've currently got the lead program as well. So, I mean, there are other programs. I would definitely tell anybody that's currently in need to definitely reach out to staff to go on the city's website, community enhancement page. Office of Grants Administration outlines what programs we have, what's available, what applications are currently open. But if they have any questions, they can definitely reach out to staff as well. So. Thank you.
Councilmember Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for all of your hard work on this. On the third slide, and I believe you had mentioned that landlords would be able to apply for this rehabilitation for their housing. However, most of the landlords aren't going to be within that eighty percent AMI.
It would be the tenants.
So it would be the tenant that's in there. What about the vacant properties? If their property was vacant and they wanted to do a rehabilitation, how would you then?
There are stipulations very similar to what we have for the lead program that they would have to certify, that they would be obligated for a, a time period that they would only rent that property to someone who would qualify based on the eighty percent.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, council member Bowlin and then Crable.
I have lots of questions.
All right.
This is a, a lot of work and I really appreciate what's been done. I, I guess one, the first question I have is how, well, did I miss something on how we went from three buckets to now four buckets? Did I miss that? Did I miss that discussion?
So for we, with the buckets that were established, we had infrastructure, the economic development and socioeconomic. Um, our goal was kind of after council discussion at the retreat and knowing that there was a desire to kind of focus on that affordable housing piece, the need for housing. Uh we decided to then take the socioeconomic and split, um doing partly to assist nonprofits, um but then also um still meeting that housing need.
Well, this is a matter of semantics. We haven't approved that, you know, that retreat vision, but um now at least I understand where that's coming from. In the, in the small business, this does sound a lot like a Russ grant with the facades and all that type of thing. Um, is, I would like to see restrictions similar to the kind of restrictions that go along with CBGD and Russ grants. And specifically, um, a small business that may have received city incentives would not necessarily be qualified. If they've received Russ grants, but in the last, you know, whatever the criteria is for Russ grant, one year, two-year um delay and um. Let's see. You did mention about the application process that's going to be coming down the pipe that we would have to approve, or or you would just set that up?
No, we would just make that available.
Okay. Um, I'd kind of like to see. And um. Oh, yeah, we had a just, we had some discussion about um sort of keeping track and having uh reports given. So that if we do need to change direction for funding, uh is that going to come later? Or or do you think that that should probably be put into here? I'd like to see.
So the reporting will be required. I mean, we're required to report back to the treasury, so all of that can be shared with council as well as it's being reported.
And I do appreciate that your your approach is to get as many nonprofits on board or benefit from this. Because there's a half a dozen on the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council, uh YWCA, you know, West Western Nav. Everybody's come asking for money, so I I appreciate that you've 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 approached it that way. Um, and then with the uh housing grant, um again, it kind of duplicates uh the C. CDBG, and um I was, would like to see some restrictions uh put around that, that if they have received CBG or. In in the last year, two years, whatever the parameters are for that granting, um that that'll also be considered when, you know, when someone applies. And I guess I also have a question. Um, I do understand that affordable housing would fall into um socioeconomic. But could it also fall into economic development in the sense that you need uh workers to drive the economy? And they need to have a place to live?
Generally with the socioeconomic, because this would be a benefit to the homeowner or the property owner. It's it's generally not within that, the economic development piece necessarily.
Okay.
Um, because it's, it will most likely be a lot of um single-family, you know, our goal is to help people stay, maintain. You know, kind of that aging in place. If we have, you know, people who um maybe are are in a situation where they just need some adjustments, modifications made to their home. Um, you know, maybe some handrails, maybe some bathroom upgrades so that they can age in place in their home. Uh we want to be able to assist with that. You know, if we just have some individuals who are um, you know, fall within those income brackets. That um, you know, are are needing some some improvements um in order for their home to be to be livable. We want to help make those improvements.
But you understand where I'm coming from as far as restrictions. I don't want, sorry, I don't want people to. Double dip, you know, if they've already applied and are getting grants, I want to spread the wealth to people that haven't received anything, so.
Yeah, and our goal would be to look at at each applicant and determine with the programs that we have, what would be the best and most impactful for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh council member Crumpler.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Hi, Melissa. Thank you for your presentation this evening and again, all your work on this. Um. It's my understanding that that um in in program two, in the socioeconomic category, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar ceiling was based on what we awarded for the mobile health unit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, you know, I I guess the way I'm coming at this is is I'm I'm wondering, um. You know, this is a one-time historic award, you know, and I'm trying to think about it, how we could best support nonprofits, particularly the ones that have the most impact on our community. Um, you know, and and given the current inflation levels, it seems like to me that there there could be two categories here. Um, larger awards that would provide um support for projects, um larger in scope. Um and a second category that would support projects smaller in scale, both of those categories being equally valuable. Um, you know, obviously, we would want, you know, um to have a measurable impact on the community. And and I guess I'm wondering about amending um this category um to raise um the ceiling to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, for two grants and three awards or or so, you know, depending on the money for at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To give larger projects um an opportunity. And and I agree with um council member Bolin, you know, that this is going to be competitive. And I think that's good, because if it's competitive, we get the most, you know, we get the most deserving um application. We can award the most deserving application. And I wonder um about making an amendment um to that purpose.
Okay, was that a question that needed an answer?
Well, um, I I actually have, I have some language, but I, you know, I wanted to, there were others wanted to weigh in on this. I'd be happy to. Wait a minute.
Sure. Uh, well, I I know we have a council member Cravill who wants to speak and then council member Montney. Uh, and certainly, if you want to.
Okay, okay, the amendment, I would like to amend this um document to read something like. In the socioeconomic category, there will be two awards at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar level and three awards at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar level.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and I know we have additional discussion, so we can certainly, so I'll keep note of what the uh the more the amended motion is. Um, you say with a category, that's what, two fifty?
Yes.
Yes. And then a category, that's what?
At one fifty.
One fifty. And that's how many awards each?
Well, you know, I I, you know, it, there would be two at a hundred, at two hundred and fifty thousand, and then with that, what's left of that um, that total money. You know, I would estimate three plus. Um, if everyone, if everyone wanted, you know, the full a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I don't know that. There might be more. If there were people who wanted just a hundred thousand dollars, there might be more than three.
So two at two fifty, three at one fifty, right?
Yes. Up to, maybe, yeah, thank you, Molly, up to three.
Up to, right. Okay, all right, so I'll keep that in mind, and if others want to make other comments, I know we have councilman Crable and Montney.
Well, what you would be doing here then is considering the amendments. Is that what we're debating at this point? Because it's normally what would you'd have is you'd have a a motion on the floor on that item itself and then a motion to amend. But kind of informally here, it looks like what we're looking, we're talking about now is this motion to amend.
Right. So what are you saying, George?
So what I'm saying is, you know, normally what would you would have is a motion on the larger item. And then if there was a motion to amend, you would look at the motion to amend first. Um, here, I guess you could take the agenda, the idea that it's it's on the agenda, this particular topic is, and there's a motion to agenda, uh to amend the topic. So I think, I think by Robert's rules, you can need to discuss whether there should be this amendment or not.
Okay. All right, then.
Especially if there's a second, of course.
Yeah, there's a second.
Yeah, so there is. So now I think you need to look at the motion to amend.
Okay. So let, do you want to discuss that then? Is that what you want to discuss?
Um, yes, I want to make sure right now, the limited, um, we've had some broader discussion, right? And now, but now the discussion should be limited to the amendment.
The amendment, yes.
And then would I have an opportunity to speak to the larger of it afterwards?
Sure.
Okay.
Within reasonable time.
So, so yeah, I don't have any comments on the.
Okay, all right. Do you have any comments on the amendment or?
So the fact that this amendment was made results in us not being able to share our other comments or questions?
No, 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 it doesn't, no. We can go back to that, yes.
Not the case.
Yeah. So right now, I think we're just discussing the the amendment. And then if you don't have any comments on the amendment, then we can go back to a larger.
I do have a question on it, I guess.
Okay.
Um, would that result in um a smaller population of eligible nonprofits receiving grants from the city?
I I mean, it would result in fewer grants. I mean, if we're we're doing larger, we're we're gonna not be able to fund as many agencies.
I I do, I mean, on, since we're limited to that topic, I mean, that does cause me um some concern, uh especially with the decision recently by our largest employer. That uh will limit um the um donation matching in Good Neighbor Grants for retirees in this community. And I think some of the uh smaller nonprofits will be hit harder than some of the larger ones in town. So I just offer that um thought. My other comments are unrelated to the motion.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion on, you know, on the amendment?
I I would just note, just to clarify, I know it says on our voting item nine A as amended, which would indicate we're approving everything. When we're just approving the amendment, just thought I'd mention.
Yeah, so what you'd be voting on here is the the motion to amend, to have the the cap of two uh two hundred and fifty dollar grants and then uh. Up to three at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And and then I, sorry. I was just gonna add that we also, so the way I have it right now is the socioeconomic level would be amended for two. Grants of up to two hundred and fifty thousand, three up to a hundred and fifty thousand. With the balance to remain available for additional applicants, should someone not meet the all of those caps.
Thank you, Melissa.
And so uh what George was saying is we would vote on the amendment and then go back to the rest, and I've got it ready when you're ready.
Okay. Is everybody ready? Okay, let's do that then, so we don't confuse each other more. We're voting on the amendment. Uh, we're missing some.
Yeah, if I could get council member Urban, Bolin, and Crumpler to ref.
Walsh as well.
His vote is in, actually.
He did, okay. Okay, so there are five yeas and three nays, so the amendment passes, but I'm clerk.
Yeah, yes, that is correct. Uh, council member Bolin, council member Walsh, and uh council member Montney.
Okay. So now we could make comments to the larger item, correct? And then after that, we will vote on the larger item, which will include this amendment. Okay.
I have a question. If you voted against the amendment, then you have to vote against the entire thing.
No, no, you don't have to. You can do whatever you want.
Right, what we're looking at here.
Contradictory, I'd like a clarification.
Oh, sure. So for example, what the discussion was, whether the art, the item nine A, the ordinance that's before you, under that. Should be amended to contain the language that was proposed in the amendment. Now it's been amended to contain that language. So you're looking at the exact same ordinance, only with the amended language in that ordinance. So you can vote, you know, that item as amended, up or down at this point.
It's just like poker, it's a new new card game.
Well, it's the same party with a new guest.
There you go. Awesome. Okay, so now you can make comments to the larger uh item if you, like you wanted to earlier.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Melissa. I know it's hard, trying to come up with something that's viable as well as getting a majority approval uh from council. So really appreciate that from you uh and your staff. Um, just, I I guess, um, just random questions, but on exhibit A. What's a qualified census tract mentioned in the small business rehabilitation grant?
So those qualified census tracts are actually determined by HUD, and they use uh data provided to them by the IRS. So um the qualified census tract was uh provided um in the in the previous PowerPoint. Um and we'll have that available as well as people are applying. Um, what the qualified census tract is looking at is that fifty percent of incomes in that area are below the sixty percent area median income. So for us, it kind of incorporates the downtown, a little bit of the west side, and then continues down south.
Okay. And then for um the uh small business rehabilitation grants and then the uh housing grants. What happens? What's what's, I guess, the process? Uh, do I have, a- as an applicant, do I have to complete the project? Doesn't sound like from the answer from Ollie, but you don't have to put a a homeowner, landlord would not have to put the money up front to get reimbursed by the city. Or would they?
So generally with the um like rehabilitation for the um those type of grants, there's um the contractor. Uh would provide, you know, all of the um proposed documents of what work is going to be performed. Um, those contractors would have to be registered contractors from the city, so a lot of them are are very used to our process. Um, a lot of them are used to um with our other CDBG and IDA programs um registered um to receive payments. And so um with those, we just would pay directly um to the contractors.
Without the homeowner for having to pay upfront.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's really good. Um, sir. Other screen. Um, I had reached out to you today with regard to historic preservation. Um, and the the question really is if a property is subject to the National Register, right? And and I I think if it's subject to the National Register, it should be going through the Historic Preservation Committee. Uh Commission, or even if it's eligible, you, it may not be designated, but only eligible.
So the way that uh the Historic Preservation Commission, they are responsible for landmarks. And anything in historic districts is outlined in chapter forty-four. So anything that is a landmark or in a historic district is the way it is defined in our code, has an S four designation. So anything that has the local S four designation requires a certificate of appropriateness in order to receive building or demolition permits. Um, so for those um buildings that are not S four designated, but are. buildings that are not S four designated, but are on the National Register, those would follow our same process that we do for CDBG is outlined by the state, uh, shipo.
And that process is to include the.
Those do not go through the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. Um, and is it true?
They are reviewed, that, but those do not go.
Reviewed by?
Uh, they can either be reviewed by, uh, qualified staff or by the shipo itself.
Okay. And I know there's historic districts designated, I think mostly on the east side, near east side. But there has not been a, a survey done on, a historic survey done work done on the re, in most of regeneration area. Would that be correct?
That I cannot speak to off the top of my head. I'd have to look.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, that's all I have, I think.
Okay, I, I know we're, uh, I think we need an extension of time, correct?
I'll make a motion to extend for ten minutes.
Okay, motion for extend for ten minutes by Councilmember Bolin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Just your voice, wait.
Uh, yes, uh, real quick, Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Recker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, and if we put the, the ten minutes up, that way I it's a good reminder for me to. Okay. I think I have Councilmember Montney and then Councilmember Crumpler and Ward. You each have two point five minutes. Councilmember Bolin, so now you have two minutes each.
I just wanted to say, I think you've done a really nice job laying this all out on a very complicated topic, and I just wanted to compliment you for that. And also to thank you for calling out aging in place and the benefits of that. Uh, I think it's a wonderful thing for you to call that out. Um, there's a lot of great research out there that supports that that's better for our population, our aging population, and also better for the community and public resources. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, and you have some time to spare for your colleagues. Thanks. I think next is Councilmember Crumpler.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, again, thank you, Melissa. Again, just to reiterate, excuse me, to reiterate, um, Sheila's comments, I appreciate all the work you do. I just wonder if you could give me a quick sense of the review process of these grants, having, you know, never been through anything like this. I know it's a, generally a staff um, process. Do you bring in outside experts? Do you, you know, maybe give me a sense of the timeline? I know that's hard to estimate, but I'm just wondering. Just a little bit more information, if you would please.
Sure. So we'll establish policies and procedures. I think probably the closest example would be the CARES Act funding. So with that, um, we did something very similar with the small business grants that we did. Um, going through, uh, the guidance that's been provided by the Treasury will outline our policies and procedures, making sure that we're um, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And so as the applications become available, um, as I said, we'll have those set up so that people are able to apply online. So we want to, um, make it as easy as possible. Um, in the past, we've done things as well as, you know, provided tablets and staff available. Um, you know, down in the lobby outside of the hub, the hub staff has been great as well. Um, being available for people to come in and fill out applications if they don't have access to technology. Um, but then by providing that online application, um, you know, allowing everybody at the same time to be able to go on and apply. Um, with that, then staff would review, uh, the application, all supporting documentation. As I said, with, with all of these grants, there will be supporting documentation required. Um, so as those applications come in, you know, making sure that the supporting documentation has been provided. Um, we, I'm assuming we'll do something very similar to what we've done with the other grants, that there will be a time limit for people to get back uh, with that supporting documentation, um, in order to, if they're, they're not able to, um, provide what is necessary to show eligibility, we would not want to hold that spot. Um, so we will provide people, uh, an adequate amount of time if they need to get documentation. Um, a lot of times staff will assist people and in where to go, what resources, how to get that documentation if they're not familiar. Um, and just working with people to make sure that we have everything. Once they've, you know, gone through the checklist of here's the eligibility and you meet all the criteria, um, then we would, um, provide them a letter saying that they do meet the eligibility requirements and they would be awarded and then kind of walk them through the process of next steps.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Ward, I think you're next.
Yeah, one, one clarification and, um, two suggestions or requests. The clarification, um, earlier when Councilmember Crable was talking about, um, whether about the process and in terms of, of contractors, you know, being reimbursed directly and, and so forth. What if a person is doing the work themselves?
So generally with this, um, with most of these programs, it's, it's going to require that they, um, use, utilize a contractor. Generally, we don't do reimbursement for, um, people doing the work themselves. For those programs, for the federally funded programs that we have.
So that's, that's different from, say, the funk grants.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is generally just facade improvements with this. I mean, we're gonna be doing, um, you know, a lot more. There's a lot more capability to do things for people. So whether that's, you know, an outdoor ramp, or like I said, you know, making those adjustments to a restroom or kitchen, or um, tho- those types of things are going to require a contractor and, and building permits.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, what if the person is a contractor or, uh, has?
Sure, then they would just have to be a registered contractor with the city.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, it, it still kind of concerns me that, that somebody who is, is skilled, but not necessarily formal, formally so, wouldn't be able to work on their own house. Quite a bit more cheaply, frankly, than, than hiring it out. That, that seems to fly in the face of, of maybe the spirit of things. So. Yeah. And is that, i- is there some rule that says that, that the funds can only be applied if they go through a contractor? I mean, whose rule is that, I guess?
Well, we would look to set it up very similar, and that is outlined in Treasury guidance, that if we're going to provide affordable housing programs, um, as we're setting it up, that there are specific guidelines, and if they fall within the National Trust, which is the CDBG, that, that those programs can be provided. So that was going to be, um, you know, we've already got those standards in place, process in place, um, in order to do that. So whether or not we could fund individuals to make repairs to their homes, that's, that's not a program that we've looked at.
What would it take to look at it?
Just going back through, through the guidance to see that if it falls within any of any of the, um, what's been approved and outlined by the Treasury.
Yeah. I, I would really, um, appreciate being able to, to know that that's been done. Um, the other, the other suggestion that I had was, um, would it be possible to have, um, when there's a code violation, would it be possible to give the property owner a heads up that this program exists? And to suggest to them how they might be able to tap into these funds in order to address the issues.
Mm-hmm, that's a very common practice for our inspectors when they're out, um, and they, when they get into conversations, if the homeowner, you know, they're addressing, well, you know, you've got these compliance, um, issues. A lot of times that they're like, you know, I'm trying, I just, I don't have the funds. The inspectors are really good about at referring people to various programs in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Bolin.
Last in two minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is gonna be brief. According to the Treasury, the funding has to be COVID-related or the effects of the, uh, pandemic. And after April twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one, is that correct? I mean, it can't be like, you know, oh, my house was in shambles before the pandemic and I can now apply for this.
So for these programs, um, for those individuals, they, the Treasury is considering them to already be disproportionately impacted by the pandemic.
Okay.
And that's why we're providing the, um, income guidelines.
Okay, so.
And utilizing the qualified census tract. So those are key things that the Treasury is looking at and saying, we know that you were already disproportionately impacted by this pandemic.
Okay. Related to the amendment that I voted against, the main reason is that it's first come, first served. And if we only have five, it's, it's not going to benefit as many people, I think, as, as if it had been fifteen to seventeen, four hundred and fifty, simply because this would be over and above the grants that those nonprofits already receive and apply for. I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, okay, thank you. And I think at this point, we're gonna go ahead and, and vote for the, uh, ordinance which includes the amended motion.
Yeah, would you like it restated?
Sure, that'd be great.
I'll try my best. Uh, so the socioeconomic level, um, is being adjusted so that there are two up to two hundred and fifty thousand and three up to a hundred and fifty thousand, um, no, what, what, what did we call it? Uh, amounts available, uh, with the balance to remain available for additional applicants to receive.
Sounds good. And we didn't have a motion yet on that, correct?
Uh, we have put this, uh, amendment into the motion, and, uh, right now, we do not have a motion or second for the final vote.
Okay, so is there a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Okay, move by Councilmember Ward?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Crumpler. Now we can vote.
It's ready.
Okay, so there are you have an passes and then the, there is one nay to announce?
Yes, and that's Councilmember Bolton.
Okay.
It's not against you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Great job. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, city managers' discussion. And.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, two, uh, slides and then, uh, two additional comments. Holidays, uh, farmers market, uh, Grossinger Arena, and that's December seventeenth, nine AM to twelve. And it is not a pre-order, uh, the vendors are set up, uh, at the arena. Next slide. Stocking stuff for Saturday is December seventeenth as well, and, uh, the hours vary by business, but this is shop local, shop small. And the two additional comments, uh, next week on, uh, December twelfth, that'll be the last, uh, council meeting for twenty twenty-two. And, uh, as we have done in the past cup, uh, two years, uh, we will have our Public Works roadwork wrap-up presentation where we invite, uh, the union labor, the primes, uh, the subcontractors, uh, some of the city staff in. And it will be about a fifteen or a twenty-minute, uh, uh, tour of, uh, a lot of the, uh, concrete and asphalt work that we've done, uh, this year, uh, very similar to what we've done, uh, presented to council in the past. And it truly is exciting to see the amount of work that, uh, we've done in the community. And then also, uh, here's a, a last minute add-on, uh, appreciate, uh, the recognition for, uh, Melissa uh, this evening, uh, by this council. Uh, because to be quite honest, um, you know, to be as well-versed as she is on this topic, and I know she has a team, she has other departments, but for her to present this, it truly did take a lot of work. So I appreciate the, uh, public acknowledgement, uh, by council. So thank you.
Thank you, uh, under Mayor's comments, the only thing that I want to say, just to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Bolin acting as Mayor Pro Tem for, um, um, presiding at the, uh, tree lighting ceremony for me. Um, I heard it was very windy and cold, uh, but a lot of fun was had, so uh, thank you very much. And council, uh, do we have any comments? Well, Councilmember Bolin and, and Urban.
Yes, I did have fun, um, but it's hard to make a speech in the dark with your hair blown in your face and your eyes.
I never had that problem.
And I miss Billy. But the most fun I had was walking around Main Street, um, looking at the, the decorations and the vignettes in the downtown businesses. And I happened to walk with, um, Catherine Dunlap. And I guess the city's having a competition with, um, Elf on the Shelf. And she and I found all sorts of interesting places where the elf got into trouble, especially with the police. So you can check the police Facebook page, they may have some pictures.
Awesome. Councilmember Urban and.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I, I'm rather chatty this evening, apparently. I have a couple of things I wanted to just highlight. I want to do a shout out to Ruben the Spice Merchant um, who has now successfully moved and opened this beautiful spice array in downtown. Um, I'm just super proud of all of the work that he's put in and the, the combination of work when he worked with that economic development and that team to bring this together. And if anybody's looking to develop a business downtown, um, I invite you to go have a conversation with Ruben the Spice Merchant, and you can tell him that I said it was okay to get just one teaspoon of creme de tartare. He'll love you for that. Um, the other thing is that this week on December seventh, uh, there's going to be a police chief quarterly meeting over at the Osborne Room at the police station from six to seven. Um, this is a super opportunity as a community, and I want to really reach out to my ward six constituents to embrace this opportunity to go and meet with the police chief face to face, hear about what's going on, what could be going on, bring their suggestions, bring their complaints. They will deal with all of that for you in this wonderful meeting that they have every quarter. Um, so again, that's this Wednesday, the seventh, six to seven at the Osborne Room at the police station. So especially everybody in the city, of course, you're welcome, but especially my ward, um, let's make an appearance there and show our support. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and my daughter can vouch for this, uh, spice person because she went in there and she could, she was raving about it. She was like, oh, Dad, it's incredible. You should go and check it out, so. Awesome. Uh, Councilmember Crable.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just, uh, uh, wanted to, uh, first mention, um, uh, the great work that one of our nonprofits is doing, the Immigration Project. Um, they had a naturalization clinic about three weeks ago, uh, helped about twelve people, uh, seven, they got their entire naturalization application completed. Others got instructed in what they still needed to do. And everybody was able to get their, uh, I think it's a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee waived. So it was, uh, uh, it was a, a, a great event and a number of us attorneys at State Farm helped. And so it was a, a great experience for everybody. And then, uh, just to add on, Small Business Saturday, first Friday, a lot of traffic. Um, a lot of businesses having deals, uh, tree lighting. Mayor, I think you owe Donna. Cause I could see you up there and you did great under the circumstances. But one of the children that was doing the dancing or singing had to come up, right, and give you a light?
Is that right? Like what? Oh, okay. I'm glad they did.
Oh, yeah. And there's a picture of it actually on one of the website.
Very good, yeah. And um, and yeah, so I, I would continue to, you know, the deals and the businesses are open up until, you know, Christmas for Christmas uh, gifts. And I'll just mention one thing about uh, spice works, uh, uh, a lot more inventory, but I don't really cook that much, so they have a lot of other things besides spices. So just mention that, uh, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion by Councilmember Bolin, second by Councilmember Becker. All those in favor, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
We are.